Quiet on set. Picture is up. Alright, roll sound.
Rolling.
Roll cameras. Cam's rolling. And three, two.
Hey, everybody. What's going on? And welcome back to Hank's Think Tank. We've got a great show for you today. Mark Hogan couldn't be here today. Wah wah wah. It's sad, but hey, it happens. I've got Commissioner, Precinct Four County Commissioner James Metz in today, and we're gonna talk a little bit about things he's done in the county, what he plans on doing. And he is running for a second term, so that's the main reason why we've got him in here. Good morning, Mr. Metz. How are you?
I'm doing great, Dave. Thanks for having me here today, Hank. I appreciate it.
No problem. Hey, I just wanted to give a shout out to your guys in the office for facilitating this whole thing. And it was easy to work with them, and I appreciate you coming in. And I know you're a busy man, so we'll make this quick and get it over with. It'll only be about six hours or so.
That'll, that'll work. We're used to it.
Alright. Okay, so you're running for a second term.
I am.
And when is the, when is the election?
It'll be March the first.
March the first, okay.
Twenty twenty-two.
So I know you've gotten a lot of things done in your first term, but what's gonna be your main goal for the second term?
Well, it'll continue to be mobility and drainage. Uh, that, that's very important here with the tremendous amount of growth uh, that we're having here in Precinct Four. You know, my family arrived here, I'm told, in around eighteen forty-one. Certainly doesn't make us special, but there was something that they liked here. And we're still here, and we love East Montgomery County, the Metz family, and many other people do as well. And people are fleeing from other states to come here because we have a lot to offer. Uh, we have wonderful schools here. We have wonderful law enforcement, wonderful places of worship, and good jobs that are available here. And, and that's what a lot of people are looking for. And so with, with that being said, there's a tremendous amount of growth. And then my part, part of my job as Commissioner in supporting that is to make sure that we have mobility. Excuse me. We're, we have many projects that we're working on to assist that now. With the road bond projects from twenty fifteen, uh, they weren't moving too fast when I arrived, but they are now. Uh, most of those are under construction with the exception of Ford Road. We're buying right away still. About fifty percent there with ninety percent complete on design for Ford Road. So mobility is going to be a key issue as it is right now, and continuing to do that. Also on the flyover, we removed the tolls uh, at two forty-two over there. Two forty-two's.
Oh, really?
We did. Not on two forty-nine, two forty-two.
Right.
And uh, that, that was helpful for those folks in the Harpers, landing Harpers Preserve area over there. Uh, mobility on those projects in that area, which will help here with the widening of two forty-two. We, uh, a year and a half ago, I wouldn't foresee us being as far along as we are. David Memorial is something that we're working on, as well as this direct connect flyover from traveling north on forty-five coming east.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's well underway, uh, there. We were able to fund that from Montgomery County from pass-through funds in the past. The state was generous, because there was a flooding issue there under two forty-two and forty-five. The state was generous.
Call that, yeah.
The state was generous to, since we were ponying up the money for the flyover, the direct connect, they're gonna take care of the, the part for the drainage there. Also working with them on, uh, David Memorial Drive. You know, uh, traffic's been horrible in that area. I know as far back as two thousand and two thousand, two thousand and one, when my wife worked down there, so
Yeah.
it will be really helpful to get the direct connect, get David Memorial done. And we're also working on another street in that area along with Don, Donwick, along with all our other road bond projects that we're moving along in a timely manner here. So mobility is gonna be key. We're gonna continue to work on that and see those projects through, as well as, as the, the other county roads that we pave daily.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're working today, uh, on the Goodson Loop and Splendor, preparing it to be paved. So a lot of projects going on, a lot of growth and, and uh, we, we wanna do our best to make sure that we can accommodate.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what's the deal with Ford Road? Is it gonna be widened or?
Widen.
Really? Wow.
We'll widen Ford Road. It, it does.
I've sat on Ford Road for about fifteen minutes waiting to hit four ninety-four before, so yeah.
We're gonna widen that and have turn lanes up by the railroad. I think we're gonna, it's gonna go all the way to fifty-nine, but it'll improve that tremendously there. It's, it's been a long time coming. And glad to see we've got that moving along in a timely manner.
Yeah. And how far down does that go down? Ford, past both curves or?
Uh, go down, go down right there at the first, where it's all the way down by is the Country Colony. I believe it's subdivision. It'll go into that.
Okay.
And uh, and widen it all the way to there and go into that neighborhood to Wesley, West Lake Houston Parkway at the end of it there.
Okay.
So yes, that, that will be helpful.
Cool. Alright, so in the same deal, you kinda talked about drainage a little bit, and I know you've got some pretty big plans for drainage. So can you talk a little bit about what, what the future holds for drainage in this area and, and uh, what we can expect if we have another big rain event?
Well, as you know, Harvey, Harvey was a catastrophic event here as well.
Horrible, yeah.
A, as well as, uh, we were out in, in the airboats rescuing people and livestock and others and trying to help at that time. Uh, drainage is still on everyone's mind, and certainly on, on mine. In a mild rain event, we had eighteen hundred homes flooded here, uh, mainly along the Peach Creek Corridor, but, uh, we received thirty inches of rain in twenty-four hours. Uh, it was just devastating to a lot of people. Some people had flooded during Harvey. Some people flooded during Amelda that didn't flood during Harvey.
Mm-hmm.
And so we immediately, after I came on board, we immediately went to work on just drainage on, on our ditches here. We have eighteen hundred miles of ditches and nine hundred miles of road with eighteen hundred miles of ditches, and some of those culverts clogged up. And some still are. We're working on those diligently every day, uh, to improve drainage in all those areas, as well as doing something called drainage easement agreements. We can do, do those on a smaller level with some folks. We're going to look at one after, uh, leave here today, uh, to try to assist. Uh, you can't go on private property, uh, and, and work drainage, but you can in some cases do a temporary drainage easement agreement to help it's, if it's affecting the county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, taxpayers roadway and others. So we've been able to do some of that to assist, uh, uh, taxpayers on the county road, and also it, it helps those folks there, because a lot of times water will back up on there. Could be a beaver dam or something sometimes that does that. But we also, uh, we went after a thirty-four million dollar grant with the GLO uh, to work on de-snagging, uh, some of our streams here, because they have obstructions over years of timber falls, uh, where there'd be a beaver dam, or in some places, human areas putting cars or tires or debris in there. Uh, some of those things, we wanted to go in and, and de-snag that uh, on those Peach Creek, Candy Creek, White Oak Creek and part of the East Park of the river to improve the flow of water and to, to help it flow efficiently. Water's the worst enemy a roadway can have.
Yeah, that'd be a big deal.
And so we're, we, we wanna work on those areas. We did not get that grant, but the good news is we resubmitted for another round of money that's coming, and we hope that we will be suc- successful there. We also, along with that same part of money, it was a different part of the grant. We're looking at putting a bridge uh, going into Roman Forest, because, you know, when it gets a rain event, it closes those people off. And we were looking at putting, that was, I think, a nineteen million dollar grant we were going after to build a bridge over Peach Creek down Roman Forest Boulevard.
So would that be a high bridge or, because I know there's already a small bridge there, but it's, it's at street level?
It would be higher. It would be higher than that.
Okay.
Uh, it wouldn't be like a huge overpass, but whatever elevation requires to get above, whatever it flooded during Amelda. Uh, they looked at it.
I think that's about eight feet from the top of that bridge.
It would, it would be pretty long.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty long stretch in the bottom there, uh, where the creek flows when it gets up. So we'd have to come on kind of hill to hill. And uh, so.
Yeah, you'd have to take that all the way to, what's the name of that, that first street that's right there, uh?
It'd be right there on Roman Forest Boulevard on the way out going west, uh, I forget the street right there. Start right along there, but then.
Cherryet Lane, I think it is.
You come down fairly quickly after you come across the creek, head east.
Yeah.
Uh, where it'll come back up, so.
Well, I bet the citizens of Roman Forest would love that.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's another part of the grant, the.
Because they get trapped in back here by Tram Road, too.
They do.
So yeah, because it floods on the backside of Tram.
It did, uh, during Amelda, I was over there, and we, we spotted some difficult areas. We changed a lot of those culverts out, they improved the drainage there. Also Patent Village has, they received a grant uh, to work on their drainage and retention ponds. That'll be, that's a major, that's a major player there for them. I think it was a, a nineteen million dollar grant. They already have engineering firm working on that with them. We assist them as we can with that. I'm really excited about what they're gonna do. And the Patent Village, that will help their, their neighbors down in the south.
Yeah, it'll take the stresses off Splendor, too, so, yeah.
That's just some of the things that we're involved with on drainage, uh, to try to improve it and just digging the ditches daily and, and flushing out culverts to stop up with sediment, debris and leaves. And we have a lot going on, uh, with drainage.
It's a big footprint, too. So yeah, I, I know that, you know, your area of service is gigantic, and it's just gotta be overwhelming to deal with drainage and road construction and everything else you've got going on. It's gotta, it's gotta make a man paper thin, you know?
We, we have a plan. The only thing is disappointing is not being, be able to do it as fast as we want. Uh, all, all the people that, that have calls in, those are legitimate complaints. They, they, they need help and we don't need help five years down the road. That's why we're, I'm going after grants, anything that we can do uh, to try to expedite this and, and get some help with this drainage.
Fantastic.
People, uh, many employees in the county, their homes flooded as well. Some of the employees in Precinct Four, so it hits, uh, it hits directly close to home.
Oh, yeah.
Trying, so we're trying to help as many as we can as fast as we can.
Fantastic. Okay, so um, my next question is, how can you better service the local ESDs and our emergency service departments? And I know that you and I had a discussion a little while ago about some things that you were doing. Um, I'd, I'd like to, to go over that if possible. I thought that was some really good information.
Sure. Let me give a shout out for those folks. Uh, all, all our guys that are ESDs, our fire chiefs are wonderful folks and, and just, uh, they put it on the line every day. You know, there used to be volunteer fire departments here and just highly respected those guys. But a lot of them are paid now and just, uh, they just do an outstanding, outstanding job here in East Montgomery County and, uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss a, a fire chief, but just have a great working relationship between Wyatt Wall and, uh, Chief Johnson and Chief Flannery. Uh, just, uh, Jason Alffen up in, in, in the northern part. They just do a, a great job here and, uh, with the growth and, and doing well. And one of the ways that we'd plan to better serve them, we're the only commissioner's office that has tracked equipment. And by that, I mean like, uh, we have a three-twenty Caterpillar excavator as well as Komatsu dozer. And, uh, we've assisted Porter a couple of times, and then over in River Plantation, we had a fire there. Uh, we are putting together a wildland fire team. Uh, we have operators as well as myself that have years of experience and whether it be land clearing or forest products, working in those areas and having to deal with wildfires before, or just by naturally like the two, two thousand and eleven fire, uh, everybody got, had their hands full in dealing with that where your private business or, or fire departments. Those are one of the things that we're going to, to work with them soon and putting, I have a meeting with, with the fire chiefs in January and to, to lay out to them what we have available, and that we'll have a faster response if a wildland fire gets out. Uh, most people wouldn't think a fire would be a problem in February, but you have, you'll have northerners can't come in a lot if they're strong, and a lot of time fires break out uh, in that time of year when the wind is really bad and the ground conditions on top of the ground and the leaves and all get dry. So it, uh, that can be catastrophic as well, like it was in two thousand and eleven. Those are one of the things that we're gonna make available to them, the team that they can call in a moment's notice, and we'll have equipment to get to them and assist, uh, right away.
That's cool. Yeah, see, I think that's a great idea. That's a really good idea. Okay, so shifting gears a little bit, um, in some of my discussions around town and, and in the community, uh, when I decided to have you on, on the show, I found out that there's a lot of registered voters out here who either don't know who our commissioner is or, and don't understand what a commissioner's job is. So in the future, in your second term, how would you better connect with the public and try to educate those guys on A, who you are, and B, what you're doing, and, and do you have any, any ideas or any future plans to keep the average guy informed as to what's going on? And this is the average Joe, you know, just not, not people who are involved deeply in the community, but just people at home who go to work and, and do what they do and, and vote, you know?
We, we have websites that, that we put information on. I will say that we could do a better job of that. We've just been so focused on trying to take care of drainage and our roads, but, uh, that'd be a way that we could, we're just through social media. We have a strong social media presence
Mm-hmm.
uh, on the commissioner website to show where we're working and doing drainage, but to get that information out uh, to where you can, can watch that and, and see what we're doing every day and to let them know what it is that a commissioner does.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so we could, we'll, we'll probably work on that as well and, and letting know that the presence is known. You can go here uh, to, to see just what we're doing and where we're doing it at.
Right.
Whether it's trash pickup or, or repairing roadways, patching potholes. I just called in a couple of potholes on the way here this morning to let them know to, to come take care of that. So, uh, that's a way that we could, that we could, uh, get a better job communicating with the folks and letting them know, hey, this is what we're doing, uh, beyond just seeing us out on the roadway when you pass.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, great answer. Okay, so, um, how would you work with, with entities such as like M said, which, you know, and I'm sure you're familiar with M said.
Sure.
To ensure that their city planning and their projects meet the needs of the public and also are in line with what the public actually wants. And let me give you an example. So, you know, if M said wanted to have a refinery come in here, for instance, maybe in their industrial park or somewhere like that, that may not be something that the average voter guy wants. And so how would you work with M said to, to steer them in their, in the right direction? And I'm not saying that M said's a bad organization. I think they do great things in the community.
Do as well.
But I also believe that sometimes they do find themselves a bit off track. And so I think that sometimes they just need to be redirected and, and, and told that, hey, maybe this isn't something that, even though it would be good financially for the county, it may not be good for the county as a whole.
Well, I think, I think in general that M said does a great job in, in promoting businesses and bringing business here to provide jobs. We, we want good jobs for our children and for future generations here, and I think they do a good job uh, in, in providing and trying to get businesses here. Uh, my part to assist them would, would be just what we do now to make sure that we have roads. And if it's something that the public wouldn't, wouldn't want, if the majority of the public wouldn't want it, then I'd be support of what the public wants. I've, I've always been that way.
Okay.
That I am a public servant, and you can look in the Bible or in Webster's what that's about, that some people don't wanna do that, but I, the public pays my salary every two weeks, and I understand what that means. And we want to continue to provide the highest level of service that we can to them, whether it's M said or, or you or, or my family or others out here. Uh, that's my goal to continue to do that through this next term.
Okay, great. And just to clarify again, I, I think M said's a great organization as well, but I do think they have the power to do things that maybe wouldn't be all that great if they, they decided that might be a good financial move. You know, so, yeah, I just had to throw that in there.
Okay.
Okay, so let's talk budget a little bit. I know that, that, uh, you know, your budget is, you know, you get your money from the taxpayers.
Do.
And so you only have X number of dollars. But are there any areas where you would be in that your experience now, would you like to increase your budget or decrease your budget? Do you think there's places where maybe we don't need to spend so much or places we need to spend more? And I know I've multiplied that and complicated a bit, but just, yeah, what are, what are your budgetary thoughts?
Ro- roads right now would be, uh, that would be helpful if we could increase for, for paving of roads. We're doing well on drainage. We've replaced a, a number of pieces of equipment that, that are very expensive, such as grade oils, but they were just getting beyond their service life.
Mm-hmm.
Oil truck, we, we, we spent quite a amount, bit of money on equipment, but you must have the tools to do your job.
Tools make the job.
Exactly. It's just, uh, be impossible to do without it. So we've had to do that. We've got some good equipment to work with now. It would be nice to have additional monies for paving. We have nine hundred miles of road, probably seven hundred miles of them are getting at the end of their service life.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's tremendously expensive. It's about probably around, just for the asphalt overlay, around a hundred and thirty, forty thousand dollars a mile, just to do the overlay. That's not counting our work from preparing the base.
That's a lot.
Crushed concrete base or whatever it is that, that we need, that particular road needs at the time, whether it's lime or, or cement, uh, to, to mix it in before we do the overlay. So you can easily at times spend, uh, two hundred thousand a mile uh, on, with your, your labor and your, your base and all and preparing and overlaying roadway. So seven hundred miles, you're looking well over a hundred million dollars that we could use right now. And that's just, that's, that's why we go, I just had a meeting uh, last week with a gentleman trying to get ten million dollars, uh, to be able to use to pave roads. And, uh, we hope to know, uh, within the next thirty days where that'll be available to us or not.
Okay.
So we're, we're going after grants or whatever, any, anything that we can use to try to help us, but that's, that's where, and with the amount of folks that are coming here that are looking for a better way of life, uh, that's one of the things that we're focused on uh, strongly is to, to take care of our county roads as well. We've had the road bond projects, which some of those are county roads. All of those would be county roads such as Ford and others, but we have other roads that are out. Like I said, there's nine hundred miles. And they need.
That's a lot to maintain.
They need attention as well, and we're aware of that. And in the meantime, we, we will patch them as we can until we can pave more roads. So like I said, they're, they're paving, they pave every day just about weather permitting. But we need to do it on a larger scale.
And that's also nine hundred miles or actually eighteen hundred miles of easement that you mow every year, correct?
It is. We have five, five, uh, that's a, that's a department of its own there. We have five bat wing mowers, uh, uh, a boom mower, um, John Deere, and then we'll, we have a grade all that I, I came on board. Nobody was doing that here. We put a, a heavy duty mower, built part of it ourselves on a grade all that, that can mow in places that a boom mower can't get. And we're, you know, limbs and debris are, are hitting school buses and breaking mirrors and things like that. Just unsafe.
Right.
And, and we're utilizing that a lot to mow at intersections especially, but other, other places as well.
Okay.
That's, that's worked well far so far.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay, so, um, on the individual municipalities like Roman Forest and, and even Splendor, um, what will you be doing in the future to assist those guys? Because we're all feeling the same growth problems that the county feels. And so, you know, I know that the municipalities are needing a lot of things. And so do you have plans in the future for working more closely with them and, and trying to assist them?
We work closely with, with them already, all, all of them. And, uh, we, we, we want to continue to do that. We have, we work with them through our local agreements where we can go in at a, at a cheaper rate and provide, help provide the services towards mowing. Recently, we were in doing boom mowing and wood branch. Right now, we're in Roman Forest, uh, doing ditch work uh, for them down there. Uh, we'll be in Patent, we're just in Patent Village. We would do, we just paved, uh, rolling hills and cut and shoot, uh, in, in the city of Cut and Shoot up there, doing work with Shenandoah. So we feel like we have a good working relationship with the mayors and, uh, want them to know that they can call on us, count on us, they already have, uh, to do things where there's a tree down in their city that they may not. We had some large oak trees down recently and a, a number of them in a short period of time in Cut and Shoot.
In that windstorm we had a month ago.
It's, it's pretty, pretty devastating. Then we went out, I personally went out in the night to, to assist those folks and help them out. Also during the, the freeze last year, uh, just difficult to get about. We, we put the, the sandbox on, uh, one of the dump trucks and, and we were out, uh, putting sand on, uh, EMS driveways and fire departments so they could be able to get in and out and navigate uh, during that difficult time. So I enjoy working with them and, uh, and trying to, to help them as well. You're exactly right. Some of them are, are just, uh, like the rest of us are struggling and trying to make ends meet. And, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to work with the mayors of the municipalities that we deal with. All of them have been very pleasant and appreciative of anything that we do, uh, to help them out.
Yeah, and they're all, you know, Montgomery County's just full of good people anyway.
Absolutely.
So I mean, that's why I live here.
East County for sure.
Yeah, yeah. So do you have any additional political aspirations?
No.
No?
No.
Commissioner's office, that's it?
I, I didn't, I didn't, uh, I didn't really plan on being commissioner, even though I might have been better suited for that with my years of experience in, in construction and, and drainage work and, and the forest products, uh, business
Mm-hmm.
uh, for many years, working, uh, we would go and work, uh, uh, natural disasters for the government, uh, all over the southeast, worked many storms over the years in the nineties and two thousands, South Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, working those hurricanes and helping municipalities a, and, and folks over there get back in order. We've done that here as well. Uh, my cousin and I are one of the first ones to bring the airboat, uh, idea here in recovering drowning victims.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then, uh, during, uh, the, the spring rains is what I call it during twenty sixteen along in there, and then Harvey and Amelda, we use those to, to assist. Constable Hayden does that as well now.
Right.
A, and, uh, rescuing folks, uh, I tell you, when you're on a rooftop and all, it's really, it's really nice to see someone coming to get you out of a situation when it especially uh, is not expected, as, as these are not. And so, uh, a, a great job that those folks are doing well, and I, I just, uh, really appreciate law enforcement. You know, you must have strong law enforcement in any society that you want to thrive.
Right.
And, uh, we are so blessed to have that here. And they do a great job where there's, uh, commis-, uh, the District Attorney's Office, Brett Ligon, he and, uh, his first assistant, Mike Holly, do an outstanding job here and working hard to keep us safe. Shannon Redwine with his department with ICAC uh, Investigations and Echo Hudson, uh, does a great job with domestic violence issues and assisting those folks that have been involved in that. Uh, all of our Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Henderson and, and those guys are doing a great job and, and, and fighting crime for us. Our Constables Department, uh, all of them, but Constable Hayden stands out and, and the, uh, I checked with them just recently. They've, uh, had three hundred and sixty, there about DWI arrests in, in one year this past year.
It's a lot.
Whose life did he save today?
Yeah.
Uh, by, by taking those off of the street. And, uh, they're just a pleasure to work with, and I, I'm grateful for, for all, all of them uh, working hard to keep us safe. But it doesn't happen without Commissioner's Court helping them get the funds that they need, and we have a great court that's working well together. And, uh, I've said all along, Hank, that your government should work for you. After all, you pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we voted to lower taxes for three years in a row. Uh, it, it doesn't look like it, but we've, we've lowered it to the no new revenue rate three years in a row to try to provide some relief. And we're still providing those services, uh, to those other agencies such as law enforcement and others and our own departments to try to.
Right.
Uh, to try to make it a, a little bit better to live. I worked hard for my adult life to, to bring about a better quality of life and a brighter future for our children here. And, uh, we're going to work hard to continue to stay on that path.
Yeah, and I think really the citizens pretty much understand. They're, they're just gonna have to pay more in taxes. It's the way it is. You know, we have so much growth out here, but we've gotten so much. We get a lot of city services. We get a lot of county services. We have good schools. There's a lot going on, and you do get what you pay for. So.
That's true.
I don't, I, you know, and a lot of people think I'm stupid, but I don't mind paying higher taxes as long as I see something for my money, and I always have in Montgomery County. So it's, it's been good for us.
My son, Jamie Metz.
I don't really have any complaints.
Jamie had a good observation, and he told me, he said, Dad, I, I don't like, uh, I don't, I don't like paying high taxes, but I love that service that y'all provide.
That's it. Yeah, I think a lot of people are stuck with that.
It's only, it's the only way you have it. And just a, a little bit on taxes, hopefully folks will understand. But if your tax bills, let's say if your entire tax bill's five thousand dollars uh, a year, some are more, some are less.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sixteen percent of that or eight hundred dollars that goes to Montgomery County. So I think all in all, they do a great job of, of, for the money that they receive, uh, provide a, a, a great service. And, uh.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, I'm, I'm glad to be a part of it. I'm, I'm doing my part as commissioner to make it a better place to live, as my family has done in the past and others before me. And as long as I'm here, I'm gonna continue to do that. It's an honor and a pleasure to get to serve and be in public service.
Fantastic. So how can people find out about your campaign? You got a campaign website?
Uh, we do. Uh, they, they can, uh, I don't, I don't have, I don't, it's about that long. I don't have it in front of me, Mr. Gene.
Well, I can put a link to it. Oh, so what I'll do, guys, I'll go ahead and add a link to his campaign website on the video. And what about Facebook? You're easily findable on Facebook.
We are on the Commissioner James Metz page.
Okay.
Uh, we have that for the campaign, which you have, you keep those stuff separate, but we also on there on, on the work that we're doing every day.
Okay.
That'll be on the Montgomery County Precinct Four Commissioner Metz page. That's a county webpage there that has to do with whether it's, uh, ball fields. I didn't mention about the Parks Department. We have made great strides in the Parks Department uh, with Greg Long's. uh with Greg Long's leadership there. We have a new ball field here in Splendor. When I came on board, the, the ball fields at Bull Silas Park were, uh they they, they were just like for practice fields. You couldn't even use them. We've got all those in working order. Improved all of our parks and our ball fields in precinct four. I had a, a wonderful compliment from a gentleman over in the Woodlands. They'd come over to play tournaments and I was in commissioner's court one day and he uh, he congratulated and thanked me. He said, your parks are just wonderful. We so much enjoy coming to East County uh to bring the kids, whether they're, they're in little league or whatever it is that they're playing or softball. Uh to enjoy those parks. So that's a, that's a nice compliment to have and and a, 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 a great job Greg Long is doing. As our parks department director, we really appreciate his efforts uh there. And gotta have recreation, you know, for kids.
We have. And it creates a great venue for the citizens to come out and meet their neighbors, you know, and just get involved. You know, so I mean, I've gone to so many different events at parks. It's been amazing.
Absolutely. And that's, I, I support those, those ball teams uh financially a- a- as others do. Uh East Montgomery County Fire Association, we've worked hard to improve things there. We are working on a new rodeo arena that we hope to have in the next two to three years there. We're looking at that. The one that's there has, have served us well, but it, it's, it's getting, it's getting old and worn out. Uh just a number of things. We're looking on proving, working on improving parking down there. Uh the splash pad was a nice addition.
Oh, yeah.
Over there, we've paid for that with a grant uh from the G L O as well. So we, we've uh we're doing a lot in the two years and eleven months that we've been here. And uh we're going to continue to work hard to do a lot. Uh lots of progress has been made, but we have a ways to go honestly on our, on our drainage and our roads and we're going to continue to focus on that.
Well, growth provides a big challenge too. So I mean, if you didn't have the growth, I think it would be a whole lot easier to get a handle on what's going on, but this growth is crazy.
It is, and we just can't, but uh I don't, I don't want to discriminate against anyone. I want to welcome, if, if you're law abiding, we, we welcome you here. And uh no one told my family uh in eighteen forty-one, no, you can't live here. Don't come here and also uh I welcome folks. If you want to contribute, we'd like for you to be an asset, not a liability. But come on and and help us make this place better.
Yeah, I agree.
Better than it already is. And it's pretty good here in East Montgomery County. I, I, it's a, I'm honored to be from here.
Fantastic. So do you have any closing statements? Is there anything that you'd like the, the public to know about your campaign, about the office? Anything like that?
Well, other than this, I, I, being a Christian, I thank the good Lord above for, for the blessing that he's bestowed upon me and my family that I have not earned, nor do I deserve. And uh I am pleased and honored to get to serve just as a piece for the sixteen years I was there. It was an honor to, uh many people still call me Judge Metz and uh not offended at all.
I always think of you that way, actually, so.
Many, many people do so. But uh I was asked to consider running for commissioner with my experience and and I'm glad that I did. It is a, it is a different job. It is challenging. But there are many needs and uh I have the experience uh to help with those along with, with the wonderful staff that I have. I haven't mentioned those, but we just have a great staff down there uh that are dedicated. Uh they live here as well. They care about East Montgomery County. And they're putting it on the line every day to, to make it better and to support uh me uh and my job as commissioner. And I simply could not do it without him. A leader is only as good as his team. George Smith, Patton's a military hero. He will, you can watch him and see what he did. He always give his troops. He knew that uh he was a good leader, but he knew that he couldn't accomplish his objectives and goal uh without, without his team. And we are blessed with some very good, talented operators and, and our management team is, is just outstanding. And uh so, so glad to get to work with those folks.
Fantastic. Well, I appreciate you coming in. I think this was, this was a great podcast. I think that you know, there was some good information provided and I think the citizens are going to enjoy this and and I go check out the website and, and be at the polls.
Well, I hope, I hope they get some information. I hope they'll get out and vote for James Metz. Uh I, I hope that I, they feel like I've earned another term. I've worked hard uh to, to do that with the team that I've assembled and put together. And so we're just going to keep doing what we do every day and uh and, and going out and work on the drainage and our mobility projects and uh do what we do. I thank you so much for having me on. Uh it's been a pleasure to be here today.
It's been good. All right, guys, so look for those construction vehicles and know where they came from. So if you have any questions or you'd like to get in touch, I'm going to leave some links in the bottom of the video. So you can get through to the county website. You can get through to his uh personal campaign page and things like that. And uh let's get out there and vote, man. And here's the thing, I don't want you to go out and vote for a name or a logo. I want you to get informed and vote for a man, vote for an idea, vote for things that are in line with what you believe in. Stay in form, folks. And uh I'm Hank Bat. This is Hank's Tank Tank and we're out.